I'll go ahead and, oh, I've got an echo. Okay, thanks. Um, welcome to our March 23rd, 2022, 4:00 PM study session. Just as a reminder for anybody who's joining us online or who might watch this later, we do not take any action during our work sessions, work/study sessions. It's for informational purposes only, and I'll go ahead and let Sarah or Jill, Jill it looks like is queued up, introduce today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jill Joliker, Assistant County Administrator. And I know we're joined online by our two presenters today from the Corporation for Supportive Housing, Kim Keaton and Gabe Schuster. I also want to acknowledge that the Director for Behavioral Health Projects, Bob Tryansky, is with us to contribute to the conversation as well, along with Shannon Houri with the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. And I know we have some other supportive partners, supportive housing partners that could participate in this conversation if need be as well. In the room, we have Car Wu with us, with artists helping the homeless, and we have several partners that are online as well, who have engaged with our partners with Corporation for Supportive Housing over the past few months through the Housing and Homelessness Stakeholders Group, working with the Corporation for Supportive Housing as they have undertaken a needs assessment for supportive housing in Lawrence Douglas County. This assessment has been done in tandem with the homelessness needs assessment that the KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research has been engaging in. What you're going to hear from the Corporation for Supportive Housing today is specific to the need for supportive housing and how that relates to a lot of the work that Douglas County has already been committed to, really invested in at the at the behavioral health campus, but how we can continue to meet that need and focus on the needs for supportive housing in our community moving forward. So with that, I'm going to, I know you have all received a copy of the report in advance that CSH prepared, but they do have, I think, a slide deck to hit the high points of that. And then we hope to have a good amount of time for conversation to allow you to ask questions. If there's questions or that CSH can provide answers to, or Bob or Shannon, or even other partners that are participating. We've got a good group here today. So, Kim, is it you or Gabe that are gonna start us out?
I think I'm gonna start, and we're both gonna pick on certain pieces of it. And Gabe's the one's gonna share a screen.
So let me just try to do that right now.
And just to be clear, it seems like we're not using video right now, which I'm fine either way.
You should be able to.
Okay, I just wanted to, I didn't want to.
There you are. Go for it.
Hi, everybody. Uh, okay. Well, thank you so much for having us here today. For me, it's my second time, I think, meeting with the Commission. So just to recap, I'm Kim Keaton. I am the Director of Data and Analytics for the Corporation for Supportive Housing. We're a national nonprofit doing everything around the supportive housing sector in terms of funding, technical assistance, policy and advocacy, as well as training and education. I was thrilled to be approached by Douglas County last fall, or I guess it was in the summer at some point, to do a supportive housing needs assessment because I'm, at that point, was the only CSHer in the Kansas City metro region. I'm in Kansas City, Missouri. Now we've hired one more, so that's good news. And Gabe and I, I'll let him introduce himself, but our unit has developed our supportive housing needs assessment methodology, and we've had the opportunity to do it in several counties and states, as well as our nationwide needs assessment. And so it was really exciting to bring it to Douglas County, Kansas. And Gabe, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. So hi, everyone. My name is Gabe Schuster. I'm a Senior Program Manager at CSH. I also am on the DITN Analytics team that Kim heads up. I am based out of New York City, and I've been with CSH for about five and a half years. And to spend a lot of my time, a lot of my portfolio involves doing needs assessment work, looking at communities and their data to think through how the need for supportive housing and supportive housing model is reflected in what we see in communities and the populations that they serve. So it's been a real pleasure to, you know, do this work in Douglas County and really excited to dig into a bit about what we're seeing in the report so far.
Great. So just going to the next slide, this will show, you know, we're, we're gonna go through a short overview of what the project was about. We'll dive, do, go through the methodology that we use pretty lightly. I think we deal with that pretty heavily in the report. Gabe's gonna walk through the findings, and then we're both gonna walk through the five recommendations that each kind of have sub-recommendations that we include in their report. So pause, see if anybody has any questions, and we'll dive in. All right, let's go. And so the purpose of the Douglas County Supportive Housing Needs Assessment was to conduct a review of local data on supportive housing need across several populations, which would allow for Douglas County to strategically plan for how much housing to develop, what kind of housing, what size of units, and at what cost, and to understand the populations locally with needs consistent with supportive housing. Next slide. So just to take a step back and get us all on the same page about what we mean when we talk about supportive housing. The term is used interchangeably with permanent supportive housing. I believe the permanent was added a number of years ago to distinguish supportive housing from other types of temporary housing that have support services, like transitional housing, et cetera. So that's where the PSH came from, and it's often just called supportive housing. It's an evidence-based model that combines deeply affordable housing, so for families and individuals that are on the extremely low income side of things, or with no income, and wraparound support services that keep households with complex needs stably housed. We often say that supportive housing is for people who, without the rental assistance, wouldn't be able to afford the housing and without the support services, wouldn't be able to stay stably housed. It's a primary intervention deployed by HUD to end chronic homelessness through the yearly continuum of care funding allocations. You know, I'll note that it was also used by the VA in the, in the form of the HUD-VASH program, and that has been widely studied and is seen as a success in reducing veteran homelessness. And it also serves as a model for other populations with complex housing and service needs that may not be showing up as frequently in the homeless system. Next slide. So, as noted, we're framing supportive housing as a model built on deeply affordable housing with these wraparound integrated support services. And we, at CSH, we know that this requires looking outside of the traditional homeless system. Often households that are frequently found in multiple systems, so in child welfare, in the justice system, in the substitute treatment system, mental health system, et cetera. They may not meet the definition of chronic homelessness to be prioritized for permanent supportive housing in continuums of care for the PSH resources available through that funding stream. Have to, it's a congressionally set rule, has to do with either a few episodes adding up to a year or continuous year of homelessness with no breaks of longer than 90 days, as we might imagine, you know, folks who are incarcerated or in long-term psychiatric stays may have a hard time meeting that definition. And so knowing this, we cast a wide net and look across systems at a specific time period. So we, we do our best to do what's sort of called a point in time, or just really look at a narrow timeframe. For the purposes of this report, we requested data when we were speaking with stakeholders from between the third quarter of last year, between July and September. We leverage local data and insights from stakeholders to drive inputs and assumptions. And we, you know, have a variety, you'll, you'll see all the stakeholders we spoke with here in a second, but we, we have conversations, we loop back, we get feedback, we bring that, bring that back in along the way. So we're not operating in a vacuum. Next slide. And so for our needs assessment and financial modeling, the inputs are the counts of households served in each system, estimated rates of need for PSH in each system, each system. So usually when we speak of rates of need, we're talking about the needs that are consistent with supportive housing. And typically, that's going to be folks with behavioral health disorders, mental health, and/or substance use, who, who have, you know, that's really the, the primary focus of permanent supportive housing. Have costs, and then, and for the cost side of things, we look at local costs associated with bringing units of permanent supportive housing online. So what does it cost per unit to develop a unit of, of housing? What is the local operating or rental cost per year for a unit? And how much does it cost in services per, per household? Our outputs are unit need by household type, so we look at individual and family households. And, you know, we might look at a range of bedrooms, sizes on those family households, and total cost by household type, and ongoing cost by household type. By, by ongoing, we mean those, those operating and support services. Next slide. I think this will be my last slide, and then I think Gabe's gonna take it after this. So we spoke to a lot of people for, over the course of this, this project. We met every other week with the Housing and Homeless Stakeholder Group and, and got feedback on the work that we were doing, updating them along the way. And then we had conversations, sometimes several conversations, with the groups you see here, both local family, mental health, and homeless services providers, as well as the Housing Authority, Substance Use System, Aging and Intellectual Development Disabled folks, tennis to homeowners, and as a developer, and then several state agencies. And these are the systems and populations that we included in the assessment. Everything, you know, ranging from individuals experiencing, individuals and families experiencing homelessness through the, in Douglas County, as well as families involved in the child welfare system, transition age youth and juvenile justice settings, that same group in foster care, aging out of foster care, adults reentering the community from a justice setting, both jail and prison, individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities, individuals in mental health treatment settings, individuals in substance use treatment settings, and individuals residing in nursing homes.
Thanks, Kim. And so I'm going to take it for a bit and walk through some of the key findings that came through in the report. After basically funneling those different systems and local data that we collected through the methodology that Kim walked through. So at the very high level, what we're seeing in that data and in those populations is a need for an estimated 381 total units of supportive housing in Douglas County. And then of those 381 units, 356 are required to meet the needs of individual households or households that have only adults in them, and 25 are needed to meet the needs of families. And here we have a breakout also of how those 381 units distribute across the different systems that we were looking at, as well as that breakout by household type. So, you know, again, we see a majority of that need in individual or adult-only households. And then we see a spread across those different systems, which isn't too surprising. We also see a really high need in that population for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and those aging in nursing homes. And we'll talk through about those, about those populations and sort of that breakout of need a little bit further. Based on the current estimates for what units can be brought online through capital acquisitions, 76 of those units are currently in the capital acquisition pipeline. The capital costs associated with 76 units, based on the numbers in our financial model, come out to about 13.4 million. And the capital development costs associated with developing all 381 needed units of supportive housing would amount to about 67.7 million. The graph that we're looking at here shows both the capital expenditures, as well as operating and service expenditures modeled out over a 10-year time period. So this is basically a very forward-looking model of how that need breaks out over time.
Hey, Gabe.
Yes?
Could you pause for just one moment? One of our commissioners has a, has a question on this slide, I think.
Hi, Gabe. This is Commissioner Kelly. Can you explain a little more what it means when you say those units are currently in the capital acquisition pipeline? I read the report multiple times, and I still don't understand what that means.
Sure. Yeah, great question. Happy to clarify that. So as part of the analysis that we were doing, we looked at the list of properties that are currently being considered by, and Jill, you might be able to help me with the specific name of the Capital Acquisitions Working Group?
Yes. So the, the Homeless and Housing Stakeholder Group has had a capital acquisitions subgroup that's been meeting for the past few months that has identified a series of projects that are easily acquirable and developable. And Rebecca Buford and Erica Zimmerman have been spearheading that group. So we've got a ready-to-go list of projects that are ready to be supported.
So Jill, you're saying that those are projects that, those are potential properties, but it doesn't necessarily have funding behind them, or it may have some funding behind them.
Correct. Some funding, yes. High likelihood, shovel-ready, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
If it's helpful, we can, it occurs to me with the question that we just assumed everybody knew what that was. But now I think that we, we can add in the final, final draft a little context around that.
Yeah, that's really helpful, and I'll make a note of that now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have caught that earlier.
And so in that list of sort of potential and likely projects, it also breaks information out by sort of the unit mix, potential target populations for those projects, potential partners in them. And so in our analysis, we also mapped the need at the system or population level onto the unit mix and potential partners of the projects listed on that capital acquisition list to think through, you know, how does that break out in terms of mapping units from the capital acquisition list onto the need that we're seeing here? Just to clarify a bit about how that fits into the project and what we're looking at on the slide. Any further questions on this piece?
No, that's great. I just wanted some clarity whether, whether funding had been applied to that or whether these were just properties identified. And, and so I think in that final report, it, it would be helpful to sort of clarify that. And maybe, I must admit, I didn't read all of the appendix, so maybe it was in there.
It's been unexpected, too.
It's largely been an internal project team planning document. I do anticipate you will look at, you will see it in, as you consider ARPA proposals. That's been the whole point of developing this, this piece of work. It's been parallel to the work that CSH and KU have been doing. So it's just another piece of information that is ready to go and help you make decisions.
Thank you. Continue, Gabe.
So digging into the populations a little bit further, when we look at only the homeless systems and the system serving people with behavioral health needs and so on, 40% of the needed supportive housing in Douglas County is already in that potential capital acquisition pipeline. As I pointed out, when we were looking at the breakout by system, that need for individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities and for individuals in nursing homes accounts for, you know, just over half of the assessed need. And these are interesting populations. I think it was very exciting to include them in the report. When we think about supportive housing for individuals with ADD and individuals in nursing homes, this really, I think, speaks to what Kim was describing in thinking about supportive housing primarily as a model of deeply affordable housing with wraparound services. And in that sense, you know, the, the needs and structure and model of housing that is appropriate for these two systems or populations really maps on well. But often, you know, individuals with ADD and individuals in nursing homes receive housing and services through very different funding streams than traditional supportive housing. So I did think it was also valuable to, you know, break those pieces out a little bit when we're thinking about the different ways of bringing the needed units online. So thinking through the financial model a little bit, we assume a five-year timeline to bring all those units online. The ongoing operating costs associated with the supportive housing amounts to 34.2 million over 10 years. And the ongoing service costs associated with the needed supportive housing amount to 17.9 million over 10 years. And that's laid out in such a way that the operating or service costs tied to a unit kick in when that unit comes online. So we would see in the model that we have 25% of that need of those operating and service costs felt in the first year, it ramps up as more units are brought online. It wasn't a straight distribution of bringing all units online over five years. There's a bit of a curve to it, which we can see in the sort of financial charts. Some of the major challenges that we're seeing in conversations with stakeholders in the community, talking to various service providers, really lie in securing that operating and service funding in order to sustain ongoing supportive housing. So thinking through sort of that need over time, there's definitely something to be thought about in terms of how that operating and service costs will be, you know, managed over 10 years, and then, you know, going beyond 10 years. We also wanted to call out that there are other less intensive housing interventions, for example, rapid rehousing, our prevention and diversion, that may be needed to support households that don't have needs that are quite so complex that we would consider them consistent with supportive housing, but who may need more than just access to affordable units on the broader market. So there's, you know, a spectrum of different interventions that can be brought to bear for the different populations that we're thinking about here, supportive housing just being probably the most robust one. And.
Great. I'll pause, see if anybody has any more questions before moving on.
It's not really a question, but I did want to, you know, when you queue up, what is that total cost to, to build it and to operate it? That, that's just to give you a sense of what the need is. There isn't, there isn't a presumption that we're going to do that, that that's the plan, like build it into the budget. No. It's, that's what the need is, and that's what it would cost. And I think what you're gonna see, you, you see it in the, in the larger report, but I think you're gonna see in some of the other recommendations that they're, they give us priority populations that we have been talking about to give us more informed choices of how we can be more strategic about those choices. Go ahead.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for that context. So there's five key recommendations, and just we'll start with the first one, which is around, you know, taking advantage of funding that's out there for capital development. So that's the, the get, get the housing built portion of things. You know, I think that using the local allocation of home ARP, the prioritizing, you know, all that you can for supportive housing to, to fund at least a portion of what's in the capital acquisition pipeline is a key opportunity that you guys have. In addition, adding to that, hopefully you'll be able to fill some of, I created a chart right here that shows my estimate of what would be available, less the 15% administrative funds from the 1.6, roughly 1.6 million. So that's 1.4 million. The gap to meet the need for the, what's already in the, the desired pipeline is about 12 million. So hopefully, the competitive application that Kansas Housing is gonna put out for their 22 million of home ARP funds can, can hopefully meet some of that gap. And we would recommend that any applications for that funding that come from Lawrence Douglas County be prioritized for supportive housing, or at least with some supportive housing in integrated dwelling, integrated buildings that have some affordability in it as well. Additionally, other opportunities that are more of your regular yearly funded forces, sources that aren't just the one-time ones attached to the Home ARP Act, are low-income housing tax credit, 9% and 4% through Kansas Housing Process Competition, home funds, and then the Lawrence, I think it's called Lawrence City Housing Trust Fund, I believe. So those are, you know, sort of your regular, the, the, the sources that are sort of out there right now. Additionally, the, the, you know, you guys might consider or think about, or at least embark on a learning of new ways to sustainably fund capital for supportive housing. I put some examples in here. These are not recommendations, that these are the things that Douglas County should do. But we include links to resources in the report that go through some of the successful local ballot initiatives from the 2020 election cycle that really was remarkable throughout, all over the country and that diversity of how these local ballot initiatives were, and creativity, where, of where the funding was coming from, how, you know, whether it was a tax, real estate tax transfers, or just authorizations to develop more affordable and supportive housing. There was some, some funding shifts from justice system, so almost in that, the defund the police. And I'm not saying that that's what everybody should do, but it was from the spirit of that. And so some, some, or some local places did that. Additional housing trust fund support, so just a simple sort of allocation of more money to a housing trust fund that could further fund, fund affordable and supportive housing, as well as local sales tax increases that we're specifically satisfied for, so for housing. So there's lots of innovative ways that communities are trying to address the lack of affordable and supportive housing. And, you know, I, I, you know, along the way in Douglas County, we're very impressed by the intellectual capital and just creativity and how you all really work together and, in an awesome way. And we work all over the country, so we don't always see that. And so it just, I think there's a lot of potential there. Moving on. Recommendation to take in, take advantage of Housing Authority opportunities. Really, these are opportunities that are offered through HUD in the recently approved budget. HUD increased, HUD had increases in a, in a long list of some of their, of their housing programs. And so one of those, just the top one right there, the Family Unification Program Foster Independent Youth vouchers, that received, for example, 5, 5 million in additional funding, which translates to roughly, you know, potentially 500 additional vouchers that would, you know, the idea is that those would be put out for a NOFA and, and, you know, and Housing Authorities could apply for them competitively. I don't believe the Housing Authority has any of these right now, or, and I don't know that they tried in the past or considered it. But these have been used. But these have been used for, for both youth aging out of foster care. And for families with child welfare system involvement. Paired with supportive services, as these have potential to become a powerful program for a very at-risk population. And what's more is these don't need to be funded with capital development. These can be used scattered site with existing rental units in the community. Same thing goes with mainstream vouchers. These, I think the formal name is like eight eleven, section eight eleven. Vouchers, but these are have been, these were offered a couple of times in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And they have, they are really a flexible type of voucher in the last couple of NOFAs. I think they said it was for non-elderly persons with disabilities. C S H worked with a lot of communities on this. And people use them for, you know, folks going in and out of healthcare, you know, settings. They use them for all sorts of populations. Currently, Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority has sixty vouchers, which could, you know, one idea is that. Turnover units could be used for non, non chronic singles for of various populations. If there was to be more, another NOFA for these, we would recommend an application for that. And then finally, project-based vouchers. There was also an increase in the project-based voucher program. Through HUD in this last cycle. Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority is a moving-to-work housing authority. These type of housing authorities, as, as I know that Shannon knows. Can have a, an ability to expand the cap at which they can, they can do project-based vouchers. It could be that, that this could be an opportunity for the community as well. And I should point out. The project-based vouchers are a very common way to fund. The operating. Cost for single-site or mixed-site supportive housing. So. This would be something to pair, for example, with some of the, the projects in the capital acquisition pipeline. And I just, just one additional note on that last one. There may be other opportunities coming out through HUD that I, that we are not aware of right now or that. That are in discussion. So that was, those are just some examples. So, okay, great. Our third recommendation is. You know, we spoke around identifying innovative strategies for sustainable operating and services funding in Lawrence Douglas County. You know, we heard this, we, first of all. We heard this all over the county in our conversations. We always hear this in all, you know, this is. In the, in supportive housing services fund, there's no. Service, there's no supportive housing sort of system that funds all the host components of it. Often, very often, almost all the time, supportive housing is a blended funding. Is blended funding model, like with, you know, pieces coming from all sorts of places. There are some emerging models for fixing that. That are, that are out there and I do include some links to examples in the report. But the key, the key strategies are, there's really three of them that, you know. They're deployed differently in different places. They look different in different places. But the first one is. Flexible funding pools. And so these are. Pools of dollars that can be used to. Flexibly deploy rental supports, you know, or services. Sometimes I've seen it used. That aren't tied to some of the eligibility requirements, for example, that the HUD resources have. And so, you know, there. Can, you know, often they're led by funders such as government. Publicly funded health systems and or philanthropy and create a pool of dollars that. You know, can be dispersed sometimes through RFPs. For contracting and then and coordinating the requirements across, across the service providers. The other model broadly, we refer to as impact investment model. So you may have heard of social impact bonds or pay for success. It's, these are really combinations of two different elements. Upfront funding provided by impact investors combined with a really, really strong performance-based contract in which. Most of the payments are made for social outcomes such as housing stability or. In the example of the Denver Social Impact Bond Initiative. Reduction in returns to jail. That was the outcome that they painted, that they paid on. These types of investment models often kickoff with a feasibility, a local feasibility analysis. Looking at, you know, the local situation, local data, local funding and, and other elements. Happening to determine if there's, you know, sort of energy around starting something like this. And then additional funding options, just linking back to the ballot initiatives idea that we, that we, we saw in recommendation one. Moving on to four, I think Gabe's gonna go through the next two for us.
Yep. So fourth recommendation is around focusing on specific populations within the need. So. As we've mentioned a couple of times, we're seeing a considerable share. Of the need for supportive housing model based, you know, units. Across those two populations, aging adults in nursing homes and people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. These are, again, interesting populations in this context because for traditional supportive housing framing. They wouldn't be thought of as homeless. And so the. Various, you know, supports that exist for providing housing for them are in place, but just. You know, structured differently, coming in, you know, through Medicaid or through Medicare. People are bringing in waivers that are supporting both their housing and service needs. But they're, you know, in the populations that we assess and the way that we. Slice the data, which is outlined in the appendixy, the appendix of the report. Here, we're really thinking about, you know, what is the subset of those populations that could live independently in the community? With that model of deeply affordable housing and wraparound services. So thinking through, you know, when we talk about deploying different funds and bringing units online. Being specific around targeting those units to certain populations. And with these two large shares, thinking through, you know, innovative ways to partner with. The current service systems that are housing these individuals to think through, you know. How might people be best moved into supportive housing, what that might look like? Especially when developing supportive housing in that model either way. Coming across the other populations, and I know this was reflected also in the C P V R report. We see a higher proportion of females experiencing homelessness in Douglas County. Which is something that definitely stood out in the data. It's not something that we see in a lot of communities. So I think there's definitely something to be dug into there around how that need is presenting. What are maybe some of the social underlying causes behind that increased rate of homelessness? And females compared to males. Especially, you know, compared to other communities. We also see disparities in the proportion of BIPOC people experiencing homelessness in Douglas County. This probably doesn't come as a surprise. It's consistent with what we see in a lot of communities. But is something that I think can be really centered in how we also talked about solutions to. Homelessness and supportive housing. The general lack of services or housing in Douglas County for people in recovery. Is another area that I think can be honed in on. Again, when we're looking through those different potential projects and potential partners. There seems to be a clear opportunity there. And then housing for the sixty-five and older extremely low-income population in Douglas County. Is largely lacking. And so we also, in conversations with stakeholders, there's been a lot of acknowledgement that there is a bit of a flight out. As people start to age in place. And that is probably another potential intervention point for thinking about that housing need. And then on to the fifth, and I believe final recommendation. This is really around centering racial equity and voices of people with lived experience and housing design and, and the development of supportive housing. We definitely firmly believe that people with lived experience are critical stakeholders in the process. And in how supportive housing is deployed in any community. And that there are really invaluable aspects and perspectives. Brought to bear by people with lived experience when it comes to thinking through a lot of the different aspects of. Program design, intervention design, the development process. We would definitely include in that the recommendation to think about when people with lived experience are engaged in the work. Which is to say, we frequently see sort of plans built and then brought into a focus group or brought into. Meeting with people with lived experience, once those plans are really established. But we've seen considerably more success in a number of projects, particularly over the last few years. When people with lived experience have been engaged, not just at the sort of final review stage, but also in some of the initial planning stages. So thinking about. How those perspectives might inform, you know. In what order do we want to prioritize populations? How do we want to go about identifying individuals and households? Based on the experience of people. Who have been homeless. To prioritize households for supportive housing. And then lastly, and sort of that ongoing connection and considering how those voices can be involved in project governance and oversight. So thinking through structures that allow for that ongoing involvement as opposed to. Bring together a focus group that might meet one time. There've been communities that we've worked with that have carved out. Seats on the governance board for various projects. For people with the experience to ensure that that voice was, you know, consistently represented and at the table. That's definitely something that we think has been very successful and I've seen have very powerful impacts in the communities where that approach has been. Deployed. And then lastly, on centering racial equity. That it is important to really purposely strive to not inadvertently further. Some of the disparities that exist in the system serving people with high needs in the community. This happens. Frequently despite everybody's best intentions. But when. Systems that prioritize individuals for housing or connect with individuals don't necessarily serve them. Fairly, then we often see that play out in terms of who is actually receiving housing or receiving the interventions that they need. In some work that we were doing last year, there were a number of communities where in conversations with people with lived experience. We saw, and also saw in the data, that there was a real lack of service connectivity, especially health services. Amongst BIPOC homeless populations compared to white homeless populations. And that resulted in disparate rates of being prioritized into supportive housing. These people simply didn't have the diagnoses that they would need to. Receive the housing and care that was appropriate for them. And then lastly, to ensure that the right data is being collected to track disparities and measure improvements over time. And this, I think, is a great way to sort of maintain accountability in the community and also demonstrate. How these interventions can not just solve homelessness at the individual level, but also. Very frequently have upstream impacts in terms of disparities in. The behavioral health system and the justice system and so on. And I believe that is it for slides for us. I think probably be happy to open it up to questions at this point. Does that sound right, Kim?
Yep, for sure.
Thank you both. Excuse me. Would you mind to stop sharing your screen and then Jill, can you make sure we can, oh, there their faces are. Hi, Gabe and Kim. Thank you for that presentation. This is Commissioner Reed. I really appreciate how, how thorough the report was. I'm curious if you can, you mentioned towards the beginning about. The folks with I D D diagnoses and then also folks in seniors in nursing homes. You talked about there being kind of different funding sources or, or revenue streams for. For folks to access resources than maybe traditional supportive housing. We speak a little bit more to that, like. Maybe, I mean, I'm, I'm aware of local services, but on a, on a state and national level, what those funding streams specific to those. Populations might look like in terms of. Accessibility beyond HUD, because it seems like maybe there's some potential HUD voucher there, but anything else would be helpful. I'm surprised by those numbers. And I know I was in the A HAD a couple of weeks ago. That you guys gave, I got a preliminary presentation and I was really surprised by the I D D numbers in particular.
Yeah, a couple things to say in response to you, and I know that Gabe has stuff he can add. One. The, the I D D numbers, I think one of the reasons why they were so high was that the folks at Cottonwood. Didn't have, they have waivers and they have spots for people, but they didn't have the staff. And the capacity to actually serve them. And so, you know, I, so that, that was. That number is probably a little higher. And I suspect that with a focus on. Increasing the ability of the agency to retain, to hire and retain staff may be able to meet some of that need there. And then, you know, as you note, on the housing side, there is, you know, there are specific. Streams that HUD that are for seniors and, you know, deeply affordable housing for seniors. On the. You know, I think. I will tell you that. We are much more familiar with the homeless system side of, of resources for housing. I think that, that typically those waiver sources come through. Medicaid and Medicare state plans that are negotiated. At the state level with the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. To my knowledge, like, you know, just going back to state plans, for example. There are a lot of state plan amendments out there for. With, in states that have expanded Medicaid, actually in a couple of states that haven't too. That are, that provide a waiver for the Medicaid plans to pay for tenancy support services in housing. And so that is one way you can meet the need of support services for very different. Populations. We didn't include that specifically, and including seniors and those with I D D, and some states are focused on those populations. We have a map on our website that actually talked, that Gabe created, actually, that, that goes through states that have those. I didn't. Rec, go so far as to recommend that in the state of Kansas, because you guys have not expanded Medicaid. And so it seemed like a farther stretch, but if, if that's something you think we could push. Would be a good idea to have floating out there. It's something we could put in there. And then, Gabe, did you want to mention anything else on I D D? Waivers and, and that piece.
Yeah, so the assessed population for I D D. Tends to be very big in a lot of the communities that we work in, and that's driven by the fact that you have. And pretty much across the country, a ton of people who are just on the waiting list for a waiver. And that is included in the assessed population that we're looking at. And. Those waiting lists tend to get pretty big, because there simply isn't enough funding coming down. To make additional waivers available and move people off of it. So that is something that tends to drive up those numbers quite a bit. And then I was also just going to. Add. In terms of what Kim was saying around the Medicaid. in terms of what Kim was saying around, uh, the Medicaid map, uh, that's on our website. There's also a summary brief that was updated just in, um, February that walks through basically examples in every state that has leveraged, um, Medicaid to fund support services and housing. Sort of a description at the state level, um, with links to the various waivers, links to the state sites that break out how those different things have been achieved. And I think we can probably find some way to make sure that that link and that brief gets shared out with folks. The map is a, another way basically of accessing that same information.
Commissioner Reed again. Thank you both. I really appreciate that. I, um, suspected that our lack of Medicaid expansion in the state had, um, something to do with both of those things. I wasn't quite sure around the I D D waivers, but figured run seniors and nursing home populations in particular that that they didn't impact. I hadn't really thought about the workforce issue, um, with Cottonwood. So that's really helpful to know about. Um, fellow commissioners have questions?
This Commissioner Kelly had just, just a couple. And one maybe just since this is a draft, maybe a recommendation you, and you reference, racial inequities in, in recommendation five, and I know that you were working off the Center for Public Partnerships report. I wonder if that could be a snapshot within there. So we have some data. I know it's in that report, but it'd be nice to see some of that data in the report, just so people can reference that.
Yep.
That data. I'm also curious of in your model, I mean, when you're thinking about the staffing costs and I, a- as we talk to our human service providers, this is becoming a bigger and bigger issue is even if we purchased, if we can do the capital, um, purchase of supportive housing, how do we staff it? Is there anything in your model that's adjusting? And, and I'm not sure what it would be for the demands of staffing. You, you spoke about it. And those, and those last two subgroups, is there anything in your model that you're adjusting for the demands of staffing there? And I'm not, I don't want to assume that cost is the only, you know, that wages are the only thing that's driving, the workforce issue, but, but I'll, I'll just ask you to comment on that a little bit.
Yeah. So right now in the model, we do include a 2.5% year-over-year increase in operating and service costs to try and just account for that growth over time that we, um, expect. But the operating costs that get fed in as an input are based on sort of current costs that we're seeing for supportive housing in the community as it stands right now. I do know that, you know, we, we have some other specific, you know, project budgeting tools that are used when thinking through like launching a specific initiative that might break out staffing costs to like a very detailed level. Thinking through different roles, thinking about the right mix of roles within a given development on like a per unit or per client basis. But that's a very bit like more specific than I think the scope of the assessment here. But there definitely I think is, is more detail that could be dug into in terms of thinking through that service staffing side. Kim?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add to, um, you know, there are different models of services, you know, some are, um, really are just around a tenancy support case management model where deep, deeper sort of, um, mental health, behavioral health services would be referred out or there would be part, there'd be partners that would be providing some of those services like Burt Nash, for example. You know, and, and so you, you can have like a lighter touch model as long as you have the partnerships in place. I mean, I certainly, it's something that keeps me up at night, what your question is, is we think about scale of supportive housing, not just in Douglas County, but everywhere. We have to have the staff and pay them appropriately so that this is an attractive job. So people want to do this, right? You know, I do think that, you know, potentially there's an opportunity with the university located, um, there that, um, there could be, you know, sort of a, a partnership with, with K U on the workforce piece. But, uh, but yeah, and I think, you know, the, the tools that if you guys are interested, the tool that Gabe talked about that we have, it's, um, it goes down, you know, go, you get to select like the size of the place and, you know, the, the staffing model and the level of intensity that you have. And, you know, whether there is other programs you can leverage and like all these things. The, the rates we use are just, are pretty general. We do include, I can't remember if Gabe mentioned this, but we also do include, um, you know, cost of like living, assume, assume, uh, cost of living increases as well. So.
Thanks. And that just may be something for us to consider and for our partners to consider as we look at proposals is, you know, maybe that 2.5 isn't going to be enough and, and we need to make sure that what, what we're putting in as the, as the service number on these capital projects. We need to make sure that we're paying people a wage where they don't end up to be the very clients that they're serving. Because we're not paying a, a, a wage that will support them. So thanks. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Reed again. Um, Shannon, I have a question for you, if you don't mind coming up to the microphone. Thanks for joining us. So I, I have familiarity with, um, some of the mainstream vouchers that were discussed and then project-based move to work vouchers. Um, I wondered if you could speak a little bit to, well, anything you wanted to share with us about those or any barriers or needs around those particular voucher programs? But also, um, if the local housing authority has explored or discussed those family unification or foster care transition. I, I've heard of those a little bit, but don't have any familiarity. So I would just love to hear any comments you have about that.
I think I got it. Shannon Nowery, Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. Yeah. So we got three increments of mainstream. They're also referred to as non-elderly disabled or Neds, um, is the word you're going to hear on the street. And we, we responded to the NOFA and were awarded those through a competitive process. So we have those and they're being issued. And they are, as they say, for non-elderly disabled. We have to identify only people who meet that definition are eligible for those vouchers. We work a lot with Burt Nash to identify that group. And then the one that's not in here that we recently received was, um, the emergency housing voucher, which came out, uh, with some special COVID funding, which we've partnered with Willow, with, uh, Family Promise Catholic Charities in Burt Nash. And those are expedited vouchers and they actually, and it's the only voucher I've ever seen with this, but came along with funding that we pay our partners to provide the support services. Um, and we have thirty-one of those and, uh, I sent an email out earlier this week about I need them all. If I can get, uh, ninety-five percent utilization, we will be eligible for the next round because they're going to reallocate. So we're working with our partners to make sure we meet that threshold. The other voucher that is, uh, being, uh, talked about is a family unification voucher. The housing authority has had what we call F U P S. And, um, but HUD allowed us to roll those into our regular M T W program. The housing authority itself created specific vouchers for kids aging out of foster care. And what I can tell you is we're having a very hard time utilizing them because we don't have that service piece. And quite frankly, most of us with teens or early twenty-somethings know that our kids weren't prepared to comply with a lease and do all the things they needed to. And these kids have had higher burden a- and the ability to do that. And so, um, we, we have vouchers for that, but, but we are having difficulty utilizing those and those we created through, um, our M T W program. The other one that was referenced was, uh, our project-based vouchers. And that is the process we used and we are using to fund the cottages. And so we have ba- project-based vouchers attached to those units. And in our M T W plan currently, um, we, we note that we will only project-based vouchers that are for special populations. Because the fact of the matter is, is it's not as if when I project-based a voucher, I still have the other voucher that can be used in the community. It's a trade-off. I, I give up one out of one bucket and I put it in another bucket. And so it doesn't, it just shifts who we're serving. It doesn't really increase how many people we can serve. And I guess the other thing is, is we, we watch for the NOFAs and
Of course you do, yeah.
We applied for all of the VASH. We got three increments of VASH. So we have forty-five vouchers that serve homeless veterans. We, uh, we jump into all of those competitive processes. And some we win and some we don't, but, um, but we, we definitely watch for them because, um, other than the, um, emergency housing vouchers, so far, one hundred percent of what we've ever brought to the community, every single voucher we've gotten to keep here, even when whatever the specific program is, ends, HUD continues to fund those for us. And so E H Ps are a little different because they're, the, the HUD basically says if they're, if there's not somebody using them come September of twenty twenty-three, it's going away. So HUD will only be the ones we can use as long as somebody's using it. But otherwise, every voucher we bring here, we keep here and we use. And, and I, you know, I would like to say that we are ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent utilized in every single form of housing assistance that we have.
Thank you, Shannon. I really appreciate that, um, overview. I, it, it occurs to me when you were talking about the, um, the foster independent youth vouchers that, and that you rolled into the move to work program, that maybe those were also affiliated with some of the reentry project-based vouchers and maybe that's how I, anyway, I'm, now I'm just thinking through services and how to establish. I mean, there's some unique barriers there for certain. So I appreciate that overview. I also just wanted to clarify with the, um, the mainstream vouchers, the elderly, uh, or not elderly disabled. What's the, I guess, criteria for defining, um, those disability? Like, does it require receiving benefits or it can be verified through other?
It can be verified through other means.
Great. Thank you, Shannon. Um, I don't have any other questions. Fellow commissioners have questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Kim and Gabe and Jill and all those partners that were listed on the slides for the work on this. This really helps us as we think about, you know, how to move forward with, and we have significant ARPA funds to think about. And not only ARPA funds, but our budget funds.
Yeah.
Where that need is. And, and I can tell you in the past, we haven't had such a good count. And so it doesn't mean we weren't doing the right things and good things. It just, we had less data to work off of. And, and so this is, this to me is very helpful. It sort of sharpens. And those recommendations that you provided, I think, are also very helpful as well. So thanks for the good work on this.
Commissioners, I also wanted to mention that one of the, um, uh, in the presentation, C S H, uh, mentioned the home ARP funds. There's going to, there's a pot of money that's available, um, for the city of Lawrence, but then there's a, a larger pot for the state of Kansas that will be eligible for, um, the city's working close, the city and the county want to work closely together and how we apply for those funds. But one of the things that Danny Walters with the city quickly identified early on was that even to apply for those funds for the home program, you had to have a needs assessment. So yeah, so a lot of gratitude to the commission for green lighting this months ago, because it really puts us ahead of the game. And, um, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, letting you all know that we plan to work closely with the city of Lawrence to make sure that we can do this collaboratively and bring down as much funds as possible.
Do you have something to say, Commissioner? Would you?
I was just gonna say, that's awesome. And I love that we can use the needs assessment to leverage it further. So that's great to hear.
Yes, yes indeed. Um, Kim and Gabe, thank you so much for your work on this, um, and the conversation today. Jill, Bob, Shannon, um, on behalf of other stakeholders that I know have done a lot of, uh, given a lot of contribution to this. I really appreciate all the legwork and I'm excited about, um, what this tool will, will be useful for in the future. With that, it is five oh five. We'll go ahead and end our work session and come back together at five thirty for our regular business meeting.